Hello everyone, I am Ranithra Punshigheba. Currently an apprentice in Data and Analytics Department of Sri Lanka in the Civil and Commercial Section. So today, I am going to help you all who are anticipating to sit for the final year examination at Sri Lanka Law College to decode company law part of Commercial Law one subject. So when considering the Commercial Law one subject, fifty percent of the syllabus is consisting of company law area whereas the other fifty percent is consisting of the law of partnerships, law of insurance and law of agency. So even though there is a fifty fifty percent split in the syllabus, when it comes to the question paper, seventy-five percent out of that question paper is from the company law area whereas the other twenty-five percent is from the other areas. And also if you take the past papers from previous five years about, you can clearly see the first compulsory question which carries twenty marks out of possible hundred has always like mostly been from the company law area. So these are enough and enough and good reasons why you should be well versed in the company law area to be able to pass this subject in order to pass the final year examination successfully. So before moving into the contents of the subject, I would like to give a small explanation what is actually being expected out of this question paper. Because when you study also, you might feel it maybe it is easy, some people. And also when you look at the question paper also it seems like the questions are pretty straightforward and looks easy and answerable. And people after sitting for the examination often come out of the exam hall thinking that they have scored really well for this subject but that is not has been the case always in the past years. It is because this subject, the examiner or the lecturer is not expecting you to parrot out the lessons that you have learnt in the class, you have learnt in the lecture in your answer booklet. Is that they are giving you practical scenarios, they are giving you problem questions where you have to think like a lawyer, think like a legal advisor, misadvising corporate company and then you have to apply those, you have to apply those rules and laws in a pragmatic approach to the given scenario. So if you do that really well, only you will be able to get good marks for this subject. Otherwise you will just get a random pass mark and that will affect your average a lot. Okay, so now I have given you an overview of the paper, overview of the syllabus and overview of what is expected out of you in the examination. And before moving into the deeper concepts and technicalities of this subjects, I would like to give you a small introduction on company law application in Sri Lanka. So you should know firstly that there are five types of businesses in Sri Lanka. Those are sole trading businesses, partnerships, private limited companies, public companies also known as PLCs and companies limited by guarantee. So sole trading businesses are businesses where a single person has formulated a business by using funds from his own personal funds or by acquiring bank loans. Whereas partnerships is a business where two or more than two people gets together, brings in property into a business and they share a profit in a ratio which they have agreed upon in the partnership agreement. And private limited companies, companies are businesses where people have invested money and in return to the invested money, they have, they are getting shares in proportionate to the money which they have invested. And also one of the key features of private limited companies is these are limited liability companies. That means when the company is in debt, the shareholders only liable to the amount of unpaid amount on their shares. So these are the features of private limited companies. And these private limited companies are controlled by shareholders and directors and below directors. There will be a management and employees who will be implementing the policies that the board of directors and the shareholders have taken in their meetings. And the difference between the private limited company and the public companies is private limited companies can't raise their capital or can't raise their funds by using the general public. They can only use private fundings of their shareholders, private fundings only. But public companies, they can raise their capitals by their issuing shares to the general public by listing themselves in a stock exchange. And the company limited by guarantee companies who are mainly focused on educational and charitable objects and they are not only saging on profits. And why they have been given the name, the company limited by guarantees, when the company faces an emergency situation, the people who have guaranteed, the guarantors of this company who have guaranteed to provide a certain amount of money in situation of emergency only will provide that amount of money which they have been guaranteed upon. So these are the main five types of businesses existing in Sri Lanka. So for our syllabus, for our examination, what is important is to know about private limited companies mainly. And also while discussing that, it is very important to discuss about the type of legal personality the companies are having in Sri Lanka. So you might have studied it for your civil procedural laws that in Sri Lankan cases, in litigation, only two types of personalities are being recognized. So first thing is natural persons and the second type of persons is juristic persons. Natural persons are normal people like you and me. But the juristic persons are people who are identified as a person in the eyes of law or by law. So these can be group of people or a body corporate and they are given the identification as a person by law. So according to the Companies Act of Sri Lanka, under the section two, all the companies who are registered in accordance with the Companies Act are considered as body corporate and these corporate bodies have the ability to be sued and to sue by their registered name. So then the companies have, companies are a juristic person. So now I said, the companies are controlled and managed by managers and employees upon policies made by the board of directors and sometimes shareholders by their decisions they are taking in the prospective meetings. So now where does all these procedures have been laid down for a company? Have we ever gone it? So now let's say, all the mechanisms of a country and all the framework and the rules, how a country should be governed is put down in the constitution. There are different constitution written and unwritten constitution and etcetera. So mainly it is a document called constitution. So also likewise a constitution is there for a country. For a company, there is a similar kind of a document which is known as the Articles of Association. So Articles of Association puts forward the provisions for the domestic regulation of a company. That is the internal regulation of management and administration of the company and also how a business should be conducted in a company has been laid down. The provisions for those have been laid down in the Articles of Association. And the shareholders of a company usually makes out and approves these Articles of Association. So a company according to the section thirteen of the Companies Act, a company could may provide for any matter in these Articles of Associations but it should not be inconsistent with the provisions which have been laid down in the Companies Act. And the Articles of a company can provide for the objective of the company, the rights and obligations of shareholders and also how the management and administration of a company should be done. And also under section fourteen, any company can adopt the model articles which have been put down in the first schedule to the Companies Act but Companies Limited by Guarantee does not have that option of adapting the model articles. And section fifteen of the Companies Act gives the opportunity and lays down the procedure on how you can, how a company can amend or adopt articles for its Articles of Association. So a company can, to fifteen of Companies Act lays down the procedure on how you can adapt, how a company can adopt and amend the Articles of Association. So in accordance with the provisions of the Companies Act and the Articles of Associations, with a special resolution, a company can adopt articles. And if a company has articles which are different from what has been given in the model articles and if a company wants to adopt an article from those model articles, then that can also be done by way of a special resolution. And also a company can amend the articles by way of a special resolution as well. And such an amendment or such an alteration must be given, notice of such an alteration and amendment must be given to the registrar of companies within ten days. Now you know that there is an Articles of Association which lays down the regulatory framework of a company and how you can amend that and what kind of things should be included in the Articles of Association and that sorts of things we now have discussed. So what is the ultimate effect of these Articles of Association? So Articles of Association have mainly four effects. The Articles of, the Articles of Association are being constituted as a contract between the members and the company. Also it is considered as a contract between a member and the other members. And the third thing is, third effect is, the Articles grant rights and imposes obligations on the shareholders in their capacity as members. And also members can rely, cannot rely on their rights in their capacity as outsiders. Now what does this mean? Now Articles grant rights and imposes obligations on the shareholders in their capacity as members. So if the Article states that if there is a dispute between the company and the member and it should be resolved by way of arbitration, but then it should be resolved by way of arbitration. Those are the rights that have been granted. So you can, in a situation where there is dispute between the company and the shareholder, you can, without exposing the procedure of arbitration, you can't straight away go to the courts because that has what has been agreed on Articles of Association by the company between company and the members. However, there cannot be any Articles in the Articles of Association which states that the Articles are non-alterable and there cannot be any separate contract also which states that the Articles are non-alterable and there cannot be any provision in the Articles of Association which requires a three-fourth majority for approval of any resolution. So these are the effects and these are what should be done and what cannot be done in Articles. And we have now discussed how Articles of Association are being made and what should be included in Articles of Association, how it can be amended and what are the provisions in the Companies Act which facilitates amendment and adoption. And also we have discussed the effects of the Articles of Association and also the provisions if included in Articles of Association which are void. And let's move forward to another two situations, important situations, how a company can take decisions. So under section hundred forty-four, you get the option of resolution in lieu of meeting. So usually a company takes decisions in meetings where all the shareholders take part and the annual one is we call as annual general meeting and usually there can be other meetings in accordance with the emergencies which rise time to time in a company and when there is a need of making of an important decision. So however, this name itself actually gives the explanation. Resolution in lieu of meeting, that means a resolution instead of a meeting. So this resolution is something which has been written down. And so you should know how these resolutions in lieu of meeting are becoming valid. So for them to be valid, there are certain conditions that should be fulfilled. So first thing is, these resolutions must be in writing. And the other thing is, these must be signed by, signed by not less than eighty percent of the shareholders of the company and those, not less than eighty percent of the shareholders has to have eighty-five percent of shareholding of the company. That means these shareholders, these all the shareholders should have eighty-five percent of the shares of the company as well. So if this number of, if this number of, if this number of shareholders who bears the respective percentage of shares have signed a resolution in writing, this would become, this would become a validly made decision in the company. And also if these conditions are fulfilled and in this kind of situation, if a decision has been arrived by a company, then it is also can be considered as similar to a decision which had been taken in a general meeting of shareholders. So and the next type of decision making which we can observe in companies, but not in all types of companies but in private companies are unanimous shareholder agreements. Section thirty-one of the Companies Act is applied for unanimous shareholder agreement under Sri Lankan law. So the conditions that has to be fulfilled for these unanimous shareholder agreements to be valid are firstly, the company should be a private company. And the second should be, the, all the shareholders should agree in writing. So if these conditions are fulfilled, then these decisions are becoming valid and these decisions can be taken in relation to any matter in respect of that company even though in the Articles of Association or the provisions of the Companies Act has laid down anything contrary to this situation. So the section thirty-one subsection two has put down few situations that these unanimous shareholder agreements can be, unanimous shareholder agreements are applicable. And first thing is, issue of shares by the company. And the second is, when a company is making a distribution. And the second is the repurchase or redemption of shares in the company. And the fourth is, the giving of financial assistance by a company for a purpose in connection of purchase of shares by a company. And the fifth situation is a payment of remuneration or a loan to a director or any confirmant of financial benefit or any other benefit on a director. And the sixth is, when the company is entering into a contract with an interested director. So section thirty-one subsection two puts down these three situations where unanimous shareholder agreement is applicable. So now if we again make a small recap of what we have discussed so far, we have discussed the types of businesses existing in Sri Lanka. We have discussed the structure of a company in a, in a, in a overall manner. And we have looked at what, what Articles of Association means and the effect of Articles of Association and the Articles which are void. If you put in two and Articles of Association and we have discussed what should be included in Articles of Association and we have discussed two types of situations where a company can make decisions. The resolution in lieu of meeting and then the unanimous shareholder agreement. So now, now the decisions are always being made by the majority as we have seen. Even though if we take a simple majority, if we take a special majority or a solution in lieu of meeting, unanimous shareholder agreement, all these are decisions made by the majority. And this is how a country is being run and similarly a company is running also based on the decisions of the majority. But however, now people, the shareholders who are opposing these, opposing these decisions are also have invested their money into these businesses. So what the duty of the corporate governance, the role of the corporate governance and the purpose of company law is always to strike the balance between the minority shareholders as well as the majority shareholders. So in order to protect the minority shareholders, so shareholders of the company, the shareholders inherently gets the right to, to make, make personal actions for the infringement of their personal rights and then representative actions as well when a one single person or right of a group of shareholders has been infringed and that is there. And however, there can be other situations which we are going to discuss, discuss. Where the shareholders' personal rights are not infringed but then there is a need for the shareholders to go to courts to tell that they look here that there is something wrong happening in the company, company by the people who are in control of the company and the wrongdoers are the people who are in control of the company. So in such a situation, the remedies that are available under company law, we call them as shareholder remedies. And now, now we explain. But first of all, before moving into the shareholder remedies, before moving into the explanation of what are shareholder remedies and how it has come forth in the evolution of company law or evolution of corporate law, I should first explain the majority rule principle. This majority rule principle has been laid down in the case of Foss versus Harpital in the British law. What has happened in this Foss versus Harpital rule is there have been some irregularity happening in the company. So as a result of that, two shareholders had gone to the courts to make an application against the wrongdoers, the directors of the company. But what the court has, what the court has said was, if a company is wrong, the proper plaintiff who should come to court on behalf of the company is the company itself. And by telling that, they have dismissed the application of those two shareholders. They have dismissed the claim of those two shareholders. So and from that case, they have come up with two important rules in company law. First thing is the proper plaintiff rule and the second thing is the majority rule principle. The proper plaintiff rule is just as in the decision of that case, if an alleged wrong has been done to the company, the proper plaintiff of that should be the company itself. And the majority rule principle is, is this. If the alleged wrong is an action which can be ratified or which can be confirmed by a special majority of that company, then the court is not going to intervene. So under these rules, the shareholders are devoid. So under these rules, the shareholders are devoid of the opportunities to go to courts for any irregularity which is happening in the, in the company. So now the thing is, even though the court says the, for an alleged wrong which has been done to the company, the proper plaintiff of that application should be the company itself, now the company is not a natural person, it is a juristic person. And whenever there is a matter coming up for or on behalf of, against that company, then who, who is going to represent the company in courts is the board of directors. But if the same board of directors who is, who is supposed to go and represent the company in the courts are the wrongdoers itself, then the law at that point clearly understood that there is a loophole in this law and this should be circumvented, prevented. So for that, the law brought in exceptions to this Foss versus Harpital rule and these exceptions are given under common law as well as under statutory statutes. So under common law, the exceptions are, there are an act complaint. So, under common law, the exceptions are, where an act complaint is ultra virus, then the shareholders can go to courts against that action. And the act is something which can be only satisfied by a special resolution by a two-third majority, then the shareholders can go to courts to make an application. And also, if the transaction, the alleged transaction is infringing the personal rights of the shareholders, the shareholders gets the right to make an application to the court. And also, if there is a fraud happening on minority by the ro- by the company and then again, the mine, the shareholders gets the opportunity to go to court and make an application. And the statutory schemes uh which have been laid down as exceptions to the Foss versus Harpital rule is uh the actions against, against oppression and mismanagement under section two hundred twenty-four and two hundred twenty-five of the Companies Act and seeking for intervi- uh seeking for restraining orders and derivative action and minority buyout which is a new concept that has been brought into the company law under the two thousand seven amendment of the Companies Act. So, then we will move forward to discuss in detail what are these uh shareholder remedies. So, when talking about seeking for restraining orders, the section two hundred thirty-three of the Companies Act is applicable. So, a director or a shareholder or shareholders can make an application to the court to seek a restraining order. So, the court can order a restraining order against a company or a director who proposes, which proposes to engage in a conduct. So, now from the, from this provision itself, we can understand that these restraining orders cannot be obtained for actions which are being completed. But these restraining orders can only be uh, only be made uh for actions which are pending completion. And also, another important feature of this restraining order is uh the applicant party can apply for an interim order uh without waiting for the matter to be fully heard uh by making an ex parte application and by giving notice for the respondents. And also respondents without waiting until the end of the case to be fully heard, they also can make an application to the court to, uh for, for a revocation of such an interim order or for a variation of such an interim order. So, you have to remember, section two hundred thirty-three is, is laying down the procedure uh of seeking and, seeking a restraining order. And restraining orders can be applied by a director of a company or by a shareholder or a group of shareholders. And the court can make an order, make an order for restraining against a company or a director who proposes to uh engage in a certain conduct. So, these are the important things that you should know about restraining orders. And the next shareholder remedy is the derivative action. And the derivative action is there, there a shareholder is exercising for the benefit of the company, for alleged wrong against the company and when the wrongdoers are in control of the company. And why this derivative action name had been given to these action is the shareholders have derived the right to make an application on behalf of the company from the right of the company to uh act for the wrongs which are committed to the company. So, that's how the derivative action name has been given to these types of uh actions. Uh so, uh in the, according to the common law, the Sri, uh in Sri Lanka, there are only three limited situations where you, where a shareholder can bring in a derivative action. Uh one means when there is a fraud happening on the minority and the wrongdoers are in control of the company which makes it impossible for the company to uh make an application on behalf of the company. Also, when there is something illegal happening in the company, then the shareholders can go and make a derivative action. And the third thing is the failure to approve a matter with a requisite special or uh extraordinary resolution uh as appropriate. And these remedies, the shareholder remedies are equitable remedies. So, there are three preconditions that should be fulfilled before going into courts. So, what, the first thing is one who comes to court must come with clean hands. And the second thing is the actions must be there for proper purposes. And the third thing is, the third precondition is that uh no other means of reverse should exist. So, if these preconditions are fulfilled and if these, if the reasons for a derivative action are limited to the ones which I have explained earlier, then yes, a shareholder is good to go with, good to go with an action of derivative, good to go with a derivative action. And the beauty of the Sri Lankan derivative action is, which has been explained under section two hundred thirty-four of the Companies Act, is that not only shareholders under Sri Lankan company law, the directors also can make an application to the court for a derivative action. And the other, uh and the other two uh shareholder remedies are the actions against oppression and actions against mismanagement. So, under section two hundred twenty-four of the Companies Act, the actions against oppression has been described. So, let's say, uh there, uh let's say there is a the conduct of the company is happening in such a way which is oppressing to the sha- oppressor to a shareholder or shareholders of the company. So, if in such a situation, a shareholder, shareholders of a company can make an application to the court under the actions against oppression. So, uh what amounts to oppression has been uh not given in the section itself or in the Companies Act, but in different, different times, in different cases, it has been decided as uh oppression amounts to harsh and wrongful actions and it can also be persistent disregard of the Companies Act, Articles of Association and such and such. And under section two hundred twenty-five of the Companies Act uh comes the actions against mismanagement. So, the first of a company which are being conducted in a manner prejudicial uh to the, prejudicial to the interest of the company and if there are material changes happening in the company which amounts to the changes of board of directors, the agents, the company secretaries and changes in the constitution and control of the company and changes in the body corporate who acting as the uh, uh acting as agents and secretaries of the company and which they, there are changes in the ownership of the shares. And by reason of such changes, it is likely to be seen that the conduct of a company is going to be conducted in a manner prejudicial to the interest of the company, then a shareholder or shareholders can go to the courts to make an application under section two hundred twenty-five uh which is against mismanagement. So, even though uh the se- the these two sections, two hundred twenty-four and section two hundred twenty-five says a share- a shareholder or shareholders can go to courts, the section two hundred twenty-six explains exactly uh what amounts and who, what amounts to a shareholder. So, here, a shareholder means uh each uh group of people who should have uh not less than five percent of shareholder or a group of people uh who consist of not less than five percent of shareholders should be there to make an application. And by the mutual consent of the, of the group of shareholders, one shareholder can go and represent all the rest of the shareholders in a uh action in the court. And also, uh for these uh, these actions, uh joint shareholders are considered, there is only one shareholders. But however, if the court finds out that these actions have been brought in without any proper purpose and proper cause and these have been brought in vexatiously, then the court can make an order to uh, to prohibit uh this respective shareholder of being appointed as a director or manager or a secretary of this respective company for at least about uh for, for a period not exceeding five years. And also, uh he can be suspended from his rights of a shareholder as well by a, by an order of a court. And also, moving into our final, the last shareholder remedy is the minority buyout. This concept I said earlier also is a new concept which has been put forwarded by way of, by way of an amendment in the two thousand seven amendment to the Companies Act. And this gives a right to a shareholder to have their shares be bought by the company when that particular shareholder has voted against a resolution or a decision in a company. So, uh there are mainly three situations uh which we consider here. Uh first situation means when the shareholder has a right or entitled to vote to alter uh the articles to impose or to remove a restriction on the business or active, on the business activities which the company can engage. Or where the shareholder is entitled to vote for a major transaction to be uh approved, uh to major transaction to be approved by a special resolution or a major transaction which is contingent on approval by a special resolution. And also in a situation where companies deciding to go to amalgamation, if the shareholder has voted against the decision, against such decision or if the shareholder has not signed a resolution in lieu of meeting under section hundred forty-four, then uh the shareholder again gets the right of the company having to buy the shares of that respective shareholder the, under section ninety-three of the Companies Act. So, so section ninety-four of the Companies Act lays, company's act lays down the procedure uh for the company to buy the shares of a shareholder who has voted against a resolution or vot- voted against resolution in lieu of meeting. And within ten working days of such resolution has been passed, the shareholder can make an application to the company requesting the company to buy his or her shares. So, within uh, uh from the date of receival of such notice, within twenty days of receival of such notice, the company can either agree to buy the shares or arrange a third party to buy the shares or make an application to the court telling that they are unable to uh, uh buy the shares due to several, several reasons like they are financially not capable of buying the shares and if they buy the shares, it will disproportionately damage the company. And then if they buy the shares, they fail the solvency test. And, and they can also reason out that they had given reasonable efforts to find a third party buyer, but they have been unsuccessful in buying, uh finding one. And if the court is satisfied with these uh, uh these conditions which have been put forwarded by the company, it can extend the company from the obligation or they can, the court can make an order to suspend the obligations. Or also, the co- the court can make any other order such as including setting aside the resolution and directing the company to not to take any action or ordering compensation to the shareholder as well as it can go into the extent of ordering winding up of the company as well. And if the company is unable to meet these obligations, then it shall rescind the resolution or it can uh decide to not to take any actions which have been resolved and also inform about the same to the shareholder in writing. So, these are the shareholder remedies, so shareholder remedies. If we give a quick recap to the shareholder remedies, first thing is the is seeking restraining orders. This can be done by a director or by a shareholder, a group of shareholders as well. And the second thing is derivative actions. So, in under common law, it's only the shareholders who can make an application uh for a derivative action, but under company law in Sri Lanka, also directors can uh make an application to court in the scheme of derivative action. And also, there are actions against mismanagement and oppression which can be taken by the shareholders. Uh and also, there are minority buyout option which can be exercised by the shareholders by uh propelling the company to buy their shares for a fair and a reasonable price. So, so uh in, in furtherance, we will have to look at winding up of companies, director duties and conversion of public companies and amalgamation uh, amalgamation in company law as well, which we can discuss in another day. So, I think I have given you a proper overview of uh, of uh the introduction of a, of a company and what kind of a personality a company holds in the eyes of law and what is Articles of Association and the effects of Articles of, of Association and the effect uh and how a company is taking decisions by resolution in lieu of meeting and by unanimous shareholder agreement. And also, the remedies available for shareholders under shareholder remedies where the duty of the corporate governance or the purpose of corporate governance and the company law is to strike a balance between the interest of minority shareholders and the majority shareholders as well. So, I hope you will, uh, I hope you have gathered some useful knowledge which is, uh, which is important for your upcoming exam and uh and have a great period of study.